To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Coram, hope you all noticed the newly designed Village of Montgomery flag behind us here. You'll be seeing those flying high in Montgomery going forward. Thanks to staff for that. All right. Item four, public participation. Is there any member of the public that's not on the agenda that wishes to make a public comment? I don't see anybody. Anybody online? Any written comments?
No written comments.
Perfect. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. If you don't mind, I would like to go totally out of order and call up next the items for discussion. Item A, liquor license request for a new restaurant at 1587 Douglas Road. I know the applicant's here and requested that we kind of bump that up. So if you don't mind, if you want to come down to the podium, introduce yourself and what you're looking to do.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dane Passo. Trying to get the license approved, do some construction and put the restaurant in a small bar gaming in Montgomery. We redesigned the whole layout. Somebody's got the layout of the place, I think.
I do.
Oh, you got it. So yeah. So what we want, we're going to do is we're going to do a pasta parlor. We were talking about it, you know, pasta. We figured, you know, the hot dogs, just that by itself wasn't enough. So we're going to do gourmet pastas, like, you know, fettuccine Alfredo, all the different pastas, you know, and gourmet, just one gourmet sandwich, we're going to do it. Gourmet grilled cheese sandwich. And I don't know, what else could I say?
So you're not doing the Nathan's Hot Dogs at all anymore?
We're going to do the hot dogs. Yeah, it's going to be Nathan's, but we added to it to make it more restaurant. You know, the hot dogs, you know, the gaming parlors could serve a hot dogs and a steam, you know, and that's it. And it's just, it's still a gaming parlor. You know, I want to do more of a restaurant with the gaming and the beer and wine.
Okay.
We're going to do, it's all going to be ordered, you know, takeout, carryout, delivery, just like my other one in Oswego, but strictly no pizza, just strictly pastas. We're trying to, I'm trying to get away from the ancil system and overhead, you know, the overhead system and all that. Trying to stay more with the steam tables, convection ovens, stuff like that. You know, really can't, you know, afford it right now to put the whole ancil system in there. You're talking another $120,000, $130,000 for all of that. So, you know, no grease, you know, we won't have no grease at all, at all. Everything will be done by, what do they call them? I got two of them in my restaurant. I can't think of them. Convection, the big major convection ovens, steam tables, and portable, portable equipment like that. And there's a new system that came out. We're checking it out right now where it's a fryer. They're electric fryers where you could use them for your grilled cheese and all that, you know, and flat table. So I, I'm checking that out right now to see if, you know, if we could get approved, you know, eventually. We're going to, we're going to present that to you too.
Yeah, okay. Questions from the board?
I was just going to say where we're supposed to have that. It's coming our way.
It is. I know I was filibustering while I was passed down this way. Sorry, this, we don't, is this the same or are they different?
Slightly different.
There's two, two different layouts, either one.
Are they the ones we had last time, Sonia?
No, these are totally different.
They were in the last board meeting's packet, but then we ended up continuing the item to this week. So they were in last month's packet.
Okay. Questions on this side?
Is there a limit to the number of gaming machines allowed?
I guess there's a maximum of six.
Yeah, how many are allowed? Six?
Yeah, six is maximum. You can't have no more than six.
Because the one, the one shows nine, the one layout shows nine gaming machines?
The reason to do the gaming is like, and I'm experiencing it and everybody else is in the restaurants. I mean, it's like almost impossible to do a restaurant now. I mean, it's like, you know, it's hard to make it, you know, especially with the pricing and everything right now. So it's an added, it's an added bonus. It's not going to be a parlor by no means. It's going to be a regular restaurant and with added gaming. And the alcohol is nothing because who, not too many people, I'm not going to go full, I don't think we're going to go full alcohol. We're going to go beer and wine. We're just trying to see, it's kind of tight too, the location. So we're looking at the other spot next to it, but I think there already talks about, I talked to the landlord that somebody might have taken that.
Got it. Do you have gaming at the, at your other location Oswego?
Oswego, yeah. I mean, it's gaming, but it's really, I mean, I don't do like the parlor, you know, it's nothing like a parlor.
Yeah.
You know, I still, I have all my seats in there and it's all roped off, you know, and it's, it's still sit-down restaurant. I could, I sit 60 people and it's, gaming is minimal, you know. The parlors do, you know, the parlors where it's non-stop, you know, and we're not going to be open till no 2:00 in the morning, you know. Well, our liquor license will probably be till 2:00. I don't know what Montgomery's is, but, but it doesn't mean that we're going to be there today.
Sure.
What's the name of your location in Oswego?
Pizza Cucina. I've been there 23 years.
They have a great Italian beef pizza stuff.
It's next to 7-Eleven.
So Mr. Passo, can you just confirm for me the little circles here? Is that a counter with seating?
It'd be a bar, it's like a bar.
Oh, okay, bar seating, okay. And then you said 60 for Pizza Cucina, correct?
Yeah.
60, so.
It's what? Like half of that maybe?
Okay.
Like 30, 40 people, I would say.
Thank you. Okay.
And my partner.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right. Any questions, comments, thoughts? From here, we have, we can always ask for more information. Yes, we're interested. No, we're not.
Interested.
If you need more stuff, you know, after you guys decide on it or whatever, I'll present it to you guys if there's anything else.
Steve?
Yeah, I like the change, the direction you're going with it, the changes. And I like adding the pasta along with, with the hot dogs. So I'm definitely interested in what you're doing.
Yeah, you know what? And, you know, think about it. Homemade sauces, you know, like in my restaurant, nothing's out of a can. I make it all homemade, but it's not that hard, you know. And I, you know, if you're a Dago, you know, you can make it, you know, you're born and raised with it. So, you know, I was born and raised with it and it's simple. And you start in a steam table, you know, that's it. When you're done at night, throw it away, make the new one. And it's not, it's not that much of a prep, you know, like pizza is a big, whole, whole different ballgame. You know, that's why I didn't want to go with the pizza. You put the ovens in there, make a dough, let it rise and all that. It's, I'm sick of it already. I don't want to even touch it. But pasta, boom, 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 boom. And you could order fast. You know, if somebody's out to lunch, here, pasta, put it in boiling water, you're done.
Yep.
So you'll be doing all of that preparation here? It's not going to be done at Pizza Cucina and then brought over?
Preparation is going to be onsite, yeah.
On the site, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, I could bring it from the other, but it's not. And you know what? Health department wouldn't go, they would go crazy over that too. Transporting food back and forth. Because I had, I had a cafe in Capley Hospital. At Capley, I had that there for like 10 years. And I was doing that in the beginning. I was making a Pizza Cucina, bringing pizzas there, back and forth. Number one, it's a nightmare. Number two, the health department said, Dane, no, no, no. I said, okay, won't do it. Even, but that was, but it was okay for me. I fed all the hospital employees. They didn't care about that.
One last question. Do you think you'll have, or does this unit, I don't know where you are in this building, have the potential for outdoor seating or anything?
Yeah, outdoor seating, there's, you see, I don't know if you ever looked at it, there's a patio there.
Yeah.
So you have potential for probably 10 to 15, nah, 10, 10 seats.
Got it.
10 seats, you know, like, you know, small tables, you know. We're thinking about doing the high tops, right? Like, you know, high top, you know, two, 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 like that.
It's awesome.
Some umbrellas, even though it's covered, but, you know, to make it look nice.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So like you're walking into a restaurant and not a parlor. But I'm not going to lie, I know we're going to need the parlor to, to help us out, to get through, especially in the beginning. It's going to, and it'll probably take anywhere, I don't know, four to six months for, for to get approval for gaming, I mean, the way the state of Illinois works.
Yeah, okay. Teresa, Dan?
Yeah, I'm good with the new menu. I like it much better than what it was before.
Cool.
Yeah, I do like the changes that you made and I'm much more comfortable with what you've presented tonight. I'm pretty guarded about liquor licenses for Douglas Road.
No, I, I could understand that, yeah, for sure. Definitely.
Yeah, I'm much more comfortable with this and of course with the G license. So I'm interested. I'm interested moving forward.
Awesome.
So that's unanimous. So this was just for information. You can work with staff at this point, kind of get your application in order, and then it would be up for board approval in the future for the liquor license. But good luck.
No problem.
We're excited.
So do I have to wait, do I, I just have to wait for approval for liquor license now? That's it, right? Three years, right, Son?
Yep.
Okay. Appreciate it, guys.
All right, get to work.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for the help.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for obliging. I'll read the consent agenda and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the January 23 Village Board Meeting, minutes of the January 14 Special Village Board Meeting, accounts payable through February 13, accounts receivable for January of '23, the building report for January of '23, water production report for January of '23, proclamation for Engineers Week, February 19 through the 25th, 2023, and proclamation for Arbor Day, April 28th, 2023.
So moved.
All right, go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
All right, and that carries, we should just call that EEI Week, right? Engineering Enterprises. We love our engineers. All right, moving on to items for separate action. The first one is Ward of Contract to Cox Landscaping or Villagewide Landscape Maintenance, any modified $1,008,128. This is split annually from 2023 to 2025 with the option to renew. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. In November of 2022, the village posted an RFP for the Villagewide Landscape Maintenance Contract. The Villagewide Landscape Maintenance Contract consists of a large variety of locations throughout the village that consist of both village-owned properties and special service areas that the village manages. Work being performed in the contract consists of mowing, mulching, cultivating, and some tree pruning. Bids were opened on December 1st of 2022 with a total of five contractors submitting completed bid packages. Bids were then reviewed by public work staff, reference tracks were completed, and a final recommendation is being presented to the board tonight for the approval of the contract for award to Cox Landscaping LLC out of Yorkville. If there are any questions, I am happy to answer them at this time.
Questions, Mark?
I have a couple of questions. Has Cox Landscaping done any work for the village before?
They have not.
Are you concerned about the contract total being so much lower than anyone else?
We will talk through that with the bidder to make sure that they had all the materials and labor accounted for, and they were confident that they're good with that price. So we don't have any reason to believe that they can't fulfill the services.
I know originally, three or four, five years ago, before we changed the makeup of this landscape contract, there were some issues and we had gone from a contractor who couldn't fulfill their obligations to a contractor that could. There was a pretty significant increase, if I remember correctly. And do we have a way out if the contractor can't fulfill the obligation? And also, part of that question, if we are awarding a three-year contract, should we award only a one-year contract as a safety net against that contractor possibly not fulfilling their obligation? I don't want to go back to how it was before.
Sure, absolutely. And staff has the same obvious, you know, thought process. We don't want to set up a contractor for failure. So to answer your question, there's a 30-day notice clause in the contract, so we, the village can provide 30 days' notice to the contractor to withdraw the contract at any point for any reason. I'm sure Attorney Jillian can, can comment more on that if she reviews the document. But that would be our, our recommendation if, if we feel that they can't fulfill their obligations. As far as the one-year versus three-year, I would have to ask Attorney Jillian for that because that is not how the RFP was crafted and proposed. It was proposed for a three-year contract, so I don't know that legally we could do that. But again, that 30-day notice that's, that's drafted into the RFP would be our, our out if we feel that they are unsatisfactory.
Yes, and you're correct. If you did want to go back and reduce to a one-year contract, certainly you could do that, but you would have to resubmit out for bid.
And it looks like all of the contractors in year two, the prices dropped significantly.
So.
Oh, mulch year and non-mulch year.
Have any of the contractors on this list done this before?
So none of the contractors that submitted bids of this year have ever worked for the village, to my knowledge.
And how much more is this new contract than what we're paying this year, roughly?
As opposed to last year?
Yeah.
It's actually a little bit less than last year. It's about $30,000 difference.
So the, the winning bid is very similar to what we're currently paying?
Yeah, and we did make some changes. So some of the quantities did change. We revised everything. We took a very fresh look at all of the service areas, recalculated all the mowing areas and mulch bed areas to make sure that it was 100% accurate because we had a lot of rollover numbers that we weren't confident in. So this year, we took a completely fresh look at it, did site evaluations for every site that is in this contract.
Okay.
If I remember my landscape contract from previous years, they have a substantial completion date on certain items like mulching, pruning, those sorts of things, correct?
I believe there's only one date in there and it's, I think it's memorialized with a holiday, but I can check, double-check that. But most of it is, is pretty open. I mean, again, most of it is depending on the weather conditions. I mean, when the grass is growing, they're going to be cutting grass. But there are specific to mulch in there in the cultivation, yes.
Mark, you mentioned that none of these companies that submitted a proposal had worked for our village previously. When you checked the references for Cox, do they have contracts with other municipalities, similar size?
They currently have contracts with Aurora, Oswego, Yorkville, and Kendall County.
Okay.
And all of those references were in support of the contractor.
I just want to make sure we're not their first big contract that they're taking on, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
So there's, I was, somewhat of a significant amount between the, the three lowest bidders, but nearly half a million dollars between the lowest and the highest, and even a little bit higher than that. A little higher, it's about $600,000, just about. What on earth? Were they providing anything different? Was, why?
I can't, I can't speak to the difference. I mean, it could be any number of things.
I mean, you see $100,000, $200,000 difference in the contract, but $600,000, that's extreme. No?
Yeah, I can't, I can't comment on that unfortunately. I don't know, don't know the rationale for the prices that they gave.
Sure. It's comforting to know that it's similar to what we're paying now because what, you and I talked about, I don't know, half a decade ago, this happened. We switched, went with a company who totally undersold the project and got into it and realized that this is not what they thought, right? So the one question I was going to ask you is anybody that's previously done this work did not bid on this. Is it because they were unhappy or not profitable? Is there any, if you have any insight as to why nobody else bid on it?
Not to my knowledge. The current, the, the former contractor was going to submit. They actually were late to the bid opening, so unfortunately we were not able to accept their bid. So they were still open to bidding the project and hoping for award, but due to that reason, they could not submit their bid.
In the last year and a half, two years, there's been some cannibalization of, of maintenance companies, and they've been bought up by other maintenance companies. I also happen to know that the person who worked for Cornerstone last year no longer works for Cornerstone and works for one of the companies that bid.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions?
I like the, the 30-day termination clause. I think that was a wise decision to put that in. Based on that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, move to second. Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Carry six zero. Thank you all. Item B is the approval of a change order authorizing the expenditure of additional funds in the amount of $48,549.66 over the awarded contract value made to Builders Paving LLC for the 2022 Infrastructure Road Program. Mr. Ott, Engineer Ott, Engineer of the Week.
Thank you, President Rowley. Yeah, so as you noted, we're seeking approval for the change order for the 2022 IRP and the amount of $48,549.66. One thing to note with that is that during the project, we were approached by the owner of the Exhaust Works, which is the business at the corner of Route 31 and Ashland Avenue, to team with him to help resurface his parking lot as part of the village's project to get him better pricing. So we entered into an IGA with him to do that. So the cost for doing that was $38,049.15, which is included in that $48,549.66. So really, the true amount that's being paid for by the village is $10,551 over the contract amount, but is under the budget amount. I'll take any questions.
Anything?
Yeah, we're partnering with a private company to tag on to our paving project.
So the reason that we had done that was we had constructed new water main replacement through basically the, the center of this particular parking lot, this parcel. So it was kind of a two-year that we put together. And the village has teamed with private organizations before in the past in IGAs. So that way, it, it helps reduce some of their costs. So it's helping some of our local businesses at no cost to the village. The, the big impact there too is that the only time that we offer that is when we're paving in that proximity. So there's no remobilization charges. And of course, the contractor always has discretionary of whether they don't want to participate in that and can withdraw.
But this initially is a concern because the village had worked through their parking lot prior to disrupted their parking lot, and this is part of a big way of, hey, sorry, thanks, we're going to help you redo it.
So we did this mostly be, just because he approached us saying that we, so when the water main project came through, we did patching that we would do in any circumstance where we do a water main project. So it was sufficient patching. The owner of the property just expressed an interest in resurfacing the rest of his parking lot due to the age, so on and so forth. So that was really the bulk of the reason. So it was kind of two things working together. We obtained an easement from this parcel as wealth for the water main project. So again, kind of acting in good faith situation.
Have we received that reimbursement?
Yes.
What were you going to do in that situation when someone doesn't cut that check?
Believe there's language in the IGA for how we would go about addressing that. But I can confirm that and find out.
This work hasn't been done, correct?
No, it's complete.
It is.
Got it. So under our contract, they're performing the work.
Are they paying the sales appropriate taxes for that work?
I would believe so. I can't comment on that. That would be a question for the contractor.
That, that's the troublesome, I think, I think Trustee Baumann started to hit on it, is, is pushing what is in essence private work through the public entity. So there's clearly some advantages from a business owner from doing that, but is it appropriate? Is the question that I have.
Yeah, I can't answer the tax one or even hypothesize about that. The, I would think that it would be few and far between where we would be in a situation where the government would be cheaper to do the work than it would be just if you did it yourself. I know that this isn't even really on private property, this example, but I know that we have in the past partnered with residents when we do work on or adjacent to their property, like replace their apron or the sidewalk in front of their house, where they're actually paying for the work. But again, that's our sidewalk. It's different. It's really a policy decision of the board.
Yeah, that's just, that's somewhat concerning. Without having seen the IGA, so workman's compensation, there, there's just some other things that I'm assuming is addressed in that IGA. If it's not, it should be. But again, that's, to me, the, the private citizen work is we're doing repair in front of their home or adjacent to the, to the building is one thing. Doing work adjacent to a, a private business to me is a, is a separate.
Yeah, replacing an apron sidewalk, that's one thing. Talking about parking lots, that's something different. But you said this work has already been completed?
So one thing that I'm sure staff has, has thought about is drafting this up so that they're really hiring the contractor directly at our pricing. I've done that a few different ways before. But I'm sure you vetted that and thought it would be best for us to do it this way.
If, if I'm a business owner though.
I would, I would say I'm going to cut the check as a business owner directly to the, the contractor. If he wants to extend this kind of work, he's there, he's doing work anyways. But to tie it in and then bring it in front of the village board for, for a change, I, just does not look or sound right, right to me. And I certainly wouldn't want to see this come across after the fact.
If I'm a business owner though, and I'm trying to tag on to something that a municipal government is doing, there's a, when I bid work and it's municipal government, it's state prevailing wage, it's tax exempt because it's a, it's a municipal project in most cases. And it kind of depends on where the funding is coming from. Some of it's Davis Bacon, which is less than union wage rate, but mostly it's state prevailing wage rate, which raises the rates for everybody. But there's also, you're right, there's a tax situation where if it's a municipal job, it's tax exempt. But if it's a private entity, there's a, there's tax that needs to be included. And I don't know, by the time that you weigh those out, I don't know if the delta there is that much greater. But I mean, it, it bears having a discussion about for sure.
So maybe one thing that, that I could see being helpful is we're in the area. If we have excellent pricing, then our contractor is willing to extend to anybody else. And the contractor getting good work is, is a good thing for everybody, I think, in my opinion. And our businesses getting solid pricing, want to make sense for them? Great. I think it maybe would be cleanest for us in the future is to offer that pricing to them or see if we can coordinate that such that they're hiring the contractor and we're not.
Absolutely.
Right, right.
There's no way it should come across a village contract for private property in this extent, unless it is something that the village, our contractors had done, i.e. it is a replacement because we disrupted a parking lot, we tore up a driveway. It becomes our responsibility to make, make them now whole based on the work that we had done. I understand that. But as a process of, hey, we're in the area, they would need a resurfaced or extension, then that's great. Here's the contractor, you know, oh yeah, that's great. I've got trucks, asphalt, I'm, I'm here, I'm right down the street. I'll give you, you know, do it for 30% off.
Sure.
All right, then that owner needs to cut a check to the contractor for that dollar amount. That shouldn't be on a village contract.
And I know that there's a, and staff can probably jump in here. I know there's situations where, let's say our restoration obligation and easement is patch, right? Or if you're, you know, outside of a certain area to rebuild a wall or whatever it is, is minimal. We restore it to like kind, I would assume. In, in the middle of somebody's driveway, he's probably going to want to repave it. And if he's paying for it, that's great. And if we can facilitate helping our businesses, I'm all for it. So staff, anybody have anything? I think going forward, we'd like to see it contracted directly with the private entity, unless it's work performed in the public right of way.
That includes homeowners, not just businesses, right? Because what do you do in a case where, where in a subdivision replacing sidewalk and stuff, and then a homeowner says, you know, I'd like to have my driveway done. Can you guys give me the great deal and I'll pay you and you pay the contractor? So we should extend that.
We've done that, but I think that the contractor was paid by
We've done that, but I think that the contractor was paid by the homeowner.
Right.
We did that on the east side because there were some houses that had gravel, asphalt, and concrete. And when we were doing the paving project, we allowed them to... But I believe the contractor was paid directly from the homeowner at that point.
Right, that's the way it should be.
Didn't come through us.
Yeah, yeah, we should not be in it. They should deal directly with the contractor, have their own... Because again, I mean, what about lien rights, too? I mean, yeah, they've been paid, what happens if the contractor said, well, you know, the business never paid me, I'm gonna lien his business, and now we're involved in a lien on a private property?
Yeah, I mean, so like the lead service line replacement, we went into people's houses, right? I mean, we did work in their house. So I would like to somehow straddle a line where we don't have a definitive. We cannot, we have a hard policy that we can't, you know, have public funds used on private property. I know some other agencies have that, and it's just a nightmare for staff to coordinate on certain things like that. But maybe as opposed to us deciding here tonight, is have staff look at what, maybe not an official policy or an official policy would be, so that the board is more comfortable and understands things ahead of time.
Right, and what we did with the lead service replacement, I mean, that was public health, safety is what we did that under, so it wasn't...
But if there's ways where we can, I mean, at minimal staff time, work with businesses to reduce their costs at no cost to us, there's a way to do that. I want us to be forward-thinking enough to make that happen.
It's just gotta be a slightly smarter way.
Yeah, okay. We'll hear, we'll wait till you're back from staff. Any other questions on this change? Are the IDOT forms that are attached to this include the reimbursable amount?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's fine as, I mean, as states...
To get approved by IDOT, it's just a form that we typically use.
Got it.
This is a non-IDOT year.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Motion to approve.
Go ahead, Debbie, thanks.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, there carries six zero, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, item C tonight is a word of contract to Johnson Site Work, Inc. in the amount of sixty-nine nine oh one for the Frauk Basin Outlet Storm Sewer Project. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Rowley. So the Frauk Basin Outfall Storm Sewer, Outlet Storm Sewer Project has been a longstanding item for the village. Now that all the easements were completed, the project can move forward. The storm sewer is being constructed as unique in the fact that the Public Works Department will be operating a manual valve during heavy rain events to release storm sewer, storm water to an existing storm sewer that was installed several years ago with the anticipation of this outlet. The outlet provides relief to the basin during heavy rainfalls, as I mentioned, reduces ponding and standing water within the basin, and also alleviate ponding and standing water in the rear yards of homes located adjacent to the basin on Johnston Drive. Total of six bids were received for the project. After review of those bids, staff is recommending the approval to Johnson Site Work from the City of Sandwich for the construction of the Frauk Basin Storm Sewer Outlet in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and one dollars, which is twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents under the engineer's estimate. If there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Who owns the property? We do?
No, there's...
And where is the property?
We have an easement from the one owner and...
I'll ask it.
For the property owners and, you know, that's how it's being constructed.
Got it. So Johnston Drive is the...
So this is, yeah, it's Johnson and Linwood subdivisions. It's on the west edge of the Frauk property at the interface between the Johnson and Linwood subdivision and the industrial developments there and the detention basin.
So it is, is more... Yeah, it's over by Gusto, right?
If you remember the transline development, it's on, the property's adjacent to that.
So currently, that site has, and I'm just trying to understand, currently it's basin with no outlet that's supposed to drain towards Johnson?
Yes, well, it's a long story, as you may recall, but I'll try to be brief. There is an existing field tile that does indirectly drain the property by infiltration, but it takes some time for it to draw down. So the storm sewer will be allowed to draw down quicker, which will be a benefit for the neighborhood. It'll have, it'll make the storage more available in successive storms. So it's just a, it's not a mandatory item, but it's definitely gonna improve conditions of the basin and the functionality of the basin.
So how are you gonna know when to open the valve? How are you gonna know when to open the valve and drain it? Are you gonna have to go out there and look at it, or...
We'll monitor it, kind of very much similar to the Parkview Basin, where we perform nearly the same exercise, just different, that one's just a little bit different because we utilize pumps there and not a valve. So same type of scenario, we're gonna monitor that throughout the heavy rainfall events with our Public Works staff.
Is this something that we could put a transducer on with the new SCADA system we're going to implement and remote monitor it so you don't have to run a guy out there all the time? And you would have real-time data, especially in a heavy rain event? Just looking into the future.
I would say it's a possibility. I would say we would probably wanna, after the construction of this, we'd wanna have a close eye on it and have that touch before we would look to go to a system like that, just to make sure that it's not impact, having any other negative impacts on any of the surrounding area before we did that. But it's a possibility, I would say, yes.
If, this would never happen, but if, let's say, somebody fell asleep and it's raining and nobody came to open that valve, the situation is no different than it is today, it still just has no outlet. There's no additional risk associated with this.
Correct, this is just an additional benefit that we can provide for that, you know, for that area in the basin.
And we talked about this during the transline conversation, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, this is exactly, and it had been contemplated in the past, but because of timing with the developments of that property, it just never got completed until this project. And the other thing that you might want to be aware of is that the funding is by developers. So the money for the outlet storm sewer is partially funded by the gas and wash development. And then there was an additional amount paid in for a fee in lieu for a storm sewer project that we're using, so it's developer-paid.
Got it. And did we, were we missing an easement required to do this work previously, or am I conflating two things?
Yeah, the easement was the actual connection. We had the easement along the residential properties. To get into the basin, we needed to get it from the transline project, so that's the easement we just got. So we had been waiting to bid the project until we had that easement.
Got it, okay.
Is there any concern with the variation in these bids coming back, this being about thirty percent under everybody else? The majority, it looks like, being item, was that seven, your storm sewers? I mean, they're fifty percent less than everybody else on four hundred and thirty-four of the twelve-inch PVC Class B type tubes. It just seems odd that that, there's so much difference in that one particular item and that they're...
Could be that they have the pipe.
It's a small, that's exactly it, I mean, it's a small project. Yeah, they could have the pipe in the yard, you know, there could be a lot of reasons for that. So we did check the references, you know, that they, we didn't have any concerns after that. Again, it's a small, pretty small, simple project, so not too much.
Does, do we have a contract with you to...
Until they construct, so...
Do we have a contract with EEI to oversee the construction of this? Or any sort of inspection, or is that something that Public Works will oversee?
I don't know if we've gotten that far yet, President. We can certainly discuss it. It's not gonna require, like...
Right.
A significant amount of inspection, but we can certainly make that happen.
Got it, and maybe it's not necessary, I was just...
Well, you know, there needs to be a certain amount of oversight, but I'm saying is it may not have to be twenty-four seven.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Are they required to issue a performance bond on this small of a job?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any further comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Carry six zero. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Pete. All right, item D is a waiver of bid and approval of stage sale, sorry, stage shade sale, say that, materials from Montgomery Park in the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty cents from Park Creation. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Rowley. So as we're approaching the start of construction for the Montgomery Park improvements in the village's downtown, the project design, designer, Signature Design Group has identified items that have long lead times. One of the major components of this project is the installation of the columns and shade materials that'll be covering the stage area that will be constructed. So due to the timing of the project with a targeted completion date of August of twenty, of this year, 2023, it's essential that we get these items on order as soon as possible to allow the manufacturer to begin the process of fabricating these materials. Waiver of bid for this project is due to the limited number of manufacturers for these types of materials. There are primarily two suppliers for these types of materials, being told by our designer. Shade Sales Shade Systems comes highly recommended by Signature Design Group, who has worked with them on multiple projects and had great success. At the time of this, at this time, staff is recommending the village board to approve the waiver of bid for the purchase of shade sale materials from Park Creations for the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars and twenty cents. One thing to note is that Shade Sale Shade Systems is the manufacturer, Park Creation is the distributor, so that's the differentiating piece between that. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Real quick, do you have a, is this in line with what we have for a total budget for the project?
Yes, I think it fell right in line with what was originally proposed in the budget for estimates.
Got it, okay.
And is this will go in after the fest?
No, this will be constructed before.
And then the sails will be taken down.
The sails will be taken down?
The sails will be removable, so during the festival, those will be removed, and then the mobile stage will be brought in, and then afterwards, the shade sails can go back up. They could be taken down for the winter time, which is suggested by the company to increase the longevity of the material.
Do you have a per kind of side price for these? Should we experience some vandalism and need to replace A or C versus B? I don't see that broken down in the, in the price quote.
So that would be something that we would put in our operating budget, not necessarily within the project unless the board wishes to have...
Yeah, how much?
Oh, how much to break it down?
No, like if you need to replace one of these from Park Creation, do you have a per cost for sale A or sale B?
Not, not at this particular time, but that's something that we can definitely ask them for.
Because we wouldn't contract for it, and I'm assuming that we would just order it and install it ourselves, but it'd be good to know if it's, you know, most of this or a fraction. And of course, it's not, you know, when we need one of these, it's gonna be in three years, and that pricing's gonna be different, but at least we know. Okay. If you have a full project budget, kind of like for the Public Works building, of what we're planning to spend when on the Montgomery Park stuff, I think that would be great for the board to have.
Sure.
Because I know that we've authorized the monuments and now this, and I actually appreciate that we're kind of trying to hit stuff early so we don't run into any issues. I'm sorry, hit stuff early so that we will run into issues later, but less of them, because just that's the world we live in right now. But then that way, the board kind of has a clear understanding.
Motion to approve. Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. All right, that carries six zero. And I didn't ask this, and I should have, but did you get a quote from the other supplier, just as a gut check?
We did not.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on to item E. Tonight is approval of a contract with ADS, the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight seventy-one for building access and camera systems installation for the new Public Works facility. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Rowley. So as the construction of the new Public Works facility continues, staff and the construction team continue to work through various contracts and scopes of work for the project to ensure the best overall outcome for the village. Being addressed tonight is an item for building access and camera systems for the project. After reviewing the project specifications under the bid packet that was already awarded for the building access and camera systems, it was determined that it is in the best interest of the village to move forward with a contract with alarm detection systems for installing these systems into the new facility. If the village were to move forward with the original equipment proposed, the village would be forced to contract with another vendor for service and maintenance to the camera system as ADS does not support the product and software that was proposed in that RFP. This will result in additional funds extended to maintain the camera system for the life of that system. By utilizing alarm detection system for this work, the village will be insured that all the products will align with the village's current system platforms that are being used throughout all of the village-owned buildings. Staff has requested a credit from the current contractor to remove this product and installation from their scope of work, and the contractor has agreed to remove, providing the products and labor with a total credit of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. The total amount proposed tonight for alarm detection system to complete the installation of both the building access system and the camera systems is one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is a difference of seventy-five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars, which the remaining sum would come out of the contingency for the project, which is currently at four hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents. If there are any questions from the village board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks.
As far as we are along on the project, do you foresee having to use any more of that contingency? Have we pretty much...
There are remaining contingency items that will come up just because of the winter conditions that we're currently in. Keep in mind that winter has been very favorable to us, so currently, it's actually upheld better than expected for us from a heating perspective, winter conditions. But there are still some remaining items that we anticipate seeing that we're working with the village's construction manager on and are well aware of.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have one question.
Nope, sorry.
This is a considerably diff...
There's no motion, is there a... Second, all right, no discussion, go ahead.
I mean, it's more than double what the builder was gonna put in? Are we, is it much more robust? Is it...
It's substantially more robust. So a couple of things to take into account is the village hall was constructed with some different equipment. And so we've had some service issues throughout the past few years where we've had to add additional equipment in from ADS so that way it can work coinciding with the software that we currently have. So it's kind of a lesson learned that taking a route of a lesser grade quality equipment doesn't always pay off in the long run either. And so, again, that's where we look at cost today versus cost in the long run of having to use equipment that ADS may not have the expertise or the support from the manufacturer with warranties and so on and so forth is kind of critical in this case.
Yeah, the only thing that I'll add is while it is an increase from what we were expecting, I think it's something that we always rightfully should have been planning for, it just wasn't in our budget before. The system could have been, should have been designed to this level previously because that's what we need and want. So that's, that's an issue to solve, but it kind of is what it is because this is the cost, this is what we want to go with.
Yeah, and you hit on a great point. It's functionality is a major differentiating component here, too. It's not necessarily just the grade of the actual equipment or product, the functionality of what the equipment that we're getting from ADS is going to do versus what was originally put in the RFP. So that was something that was obviously missed throughout that process, and we're trying to rectify now.
How have you verified that you're getting a full deduct from Kellenberger Electric?
So that has been, the process of going through the credit was conducted by Komosey, the village's construction manager, to make sure that all of the items are accounted for in the credit.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, hearing none, there's been a motion and a second. Go ahead and call the roll. roll.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Bowman.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
No.
I've won. Thank you. All right, we already did items for discussion. Is there anything new or unfinished?
On what? Sunday, the 19th, there'll be a fundraiser here in Montgomery at Pig Dog Pub Chili Cook-Off benefiting Casa Kendall County. So if anyone's interested in coming out and tasting some, I get the privilege of being one of the judges there, looking forward to it and raising money for Casa. For some reason, Doug, it seems like you'd make a chill, a killer pot of chili. So you've got a week, too.
I've been known to eat a killer pot of chili. I think you had it right the first time. I appreciate the correction, though.
That's awesome. All right, thank you. Yeah, let us know that date if you can put that in the notes so we all are aware. All right, anything else? Future meetings, we will meet tonight at 7:00 PM in this room. Committee, the whole meeting will be canceled, and we will have the Intergovernmental Committee meeting on the 27th at 6:00 PM before our board meeting. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session because we won't be coming back to discuss the setting of price for sale or lease of property owned by the village.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Bowman.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.